Good morning, everybody. I'll bang my fist on the table to call the meeting to order. If you'd all please rise for the invocation, Pastor Russ Winn will be leading us in prayer this morning, and I would ask Pastor Winn that you also lead the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I will do that. Thank you, Mayor, and the City Council for allowing me to open up in prayer. So let us pray. I want to start the prayer off with a paragraph that George Washington prayed in October 3rd, 1789, and then I'll close it with my prayer. George Washington said this, "Whereas it is the duty," this is his prayer, "whereas it is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, and to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to import His protection and favor." And Lord, we capitalize on that prayer this morning, and Lord, we ask Your protection to continue, Your providence to continue to be upon us as a nation. And as we struggle and as we come to grips with this coronavirus, we pray, God, that You would protect us. We pray for the families that have been affected by this, Lord. All of us have, Lord, or some that have even lost their lives. We just pray, God, that divine providence would intervene, Lord, and that You would be with our president and the people that are in charge in Washington and how they maneuver through this. And, Lord, today, our City Council, these that we have elected to serve, to do the will of the people here in Benita Springs, we pray Your blessings and Your guidance upon the agenda that's before us today. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Winn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible)
Thank you very much, and God bless you.
God bless you, and God bless America. I'm signing off.
Thank you. Thanks, Russ.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilwoman Corey?
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Present.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Here.
Okay, well, good morning, everybody. Gab, I think you had sent in some public comments, or Laura, or Arlene, any public comments that we've received? I know I saw some.
Correct, Mayor. We have posted those public comments on our website and forwarded them to City Council. They will become a part of the official record for the meeting.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Arlene. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, sir, I'm sorry to interrupt. If we could go through our procedures for the Zoom meeting for compliance with Sunshine regulations.
Absolutely, please do.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. In our efforts to take all precautions to proactively protect the public health and safety of our community, the city of Benita Springs has decided to hold a virtual meeting in the best interests of our community. We are using Zoom technology to hold this meeting on April 15th. It is a virtual City Council meeting. Additionally, City Council has selected the virtual platform that require, the selection of this virtual platform does not require any purchase by the public to participate or download. Aside from the Zoom platform, all the participants will be appearing remotely. The public will have no discernible difference in their ability to watch this meeting. We have collected public comments via email yesterday, and Laura will go through the procedures of how some additional public comments will be received during our meeting.
Great. Thank you, Arlene.
So to touch on the public comments, we also offered the option for phone-ins for this virtual meeting. We do not have any at this time, but we did ask that anyone who would like to participate, email us, and that we would follow up with them this morning and provide them the login information to phone in the public comments. So that's something that we've been working on and will continue to do as we do virtual meetings in the future. So we also are offering the chat option, as we did at the council meeting previously. So no one has gone on the chat at this point, but when we open public comment later in the meeting, we may see that, and if so, I will read that to you. And then we're also, as usual, airing this live on the city website, as well as cable channels that we normally air VTV on, and those include Comcast Channel 98, Summit Broadband Cable Channel 96, Hotwire Channel 398, CenturyLink Prism TV Channel 87. We will also rebroadcast councilly on cable, as well as posted on the city website.
Wonderful.
Laura, you have some issues you want to walk on and back.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Derek, good morning.
Good morning. The public comments options outlined by Arlene and Laura, along with the public notice and other options to participate in this meeting, comply with Chapter 120 and Chapter 286 Florida Sunshine laws.
Okay. Wonderful. Arlene, anything else to add?
Yes, Mayor, at this time, if City Council would provide us with a motion to adopt the procedures for this public meeting virtually.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and multiple seconds to receive these guidelines in compliance with Florida statutes and Florida law for Zoom meetings and public notice and public participation, et cetera, et cetera. As a further discussion, Counsel, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Arlene, or Derek, or Laura, anything else at all that we need to go over?
No, so we're ready to move on with the next agenda item.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Arlene. Counsel, we're now going to move on to the consent agenda. There are four items there. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to accept and a second. Counsel, as a further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Arlene, or Derek, or Laura, anything else at all that we need to go over?
No, so we're ready to move on with the next agenda item.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Arlene. Counsel, we're now going to move on to the consent agenda. There are four items there. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to accept and a second. Counsel, as a further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. And for folks that aren't looking at that, one of those resolutions was to accept our election results from March 17th. So once again, congratulations, new Councilman Jesse Purdon and new Councilman Chris Corey. We're glad to have you with us. Thank you very much. Counsel, any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. There's no proclamations today, but there is a presentation, which, in the interest of being timely, and I apologize for the notice, the short notice, I should say, but in the interest of time and in the interest of the item being what I call ripe, if you will, I've invited AT&amp;T to be with us to tell us some technology that they have that could quite frankly be helpful to us. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Angela, and your team at AT&amp;T.
Thank you. I want to make sure that we have my fellow team members on. I know that they were having trouble getting access to the bridge. Brad Lane, Jason Barton, and Juan Jimenez from AT&amp;T, are you on the link?
So I am. I can hear, and Jason, the presenter is waiting to be let in by the host. So I think he dialed in. He just scouted me that he's still waiting to be let in.
Okay, that's not my click of the button. I apologize, but we'll get that figured out shortly.
And Angela, this is Juan Jimenez. Yes, I'm connected.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for taking time to meet with us. I know it was short notice, and I appreciate that. I also saw before the meeting that Lee County in Florida had 18 people passed so far of coronavirus, and I want to send my condolences to you and your community. That's quite a substantial number of individuals who have succumbed to COVID-related illnesses. When communities and governors and leaders are talking about reopening the community, they talk about how to make people feel comfortable with getting back to the way the business was before COVID. And we know this is a new normal. And so what governors and public officials are talking about is they're talking about a new reality where people's temperatures are taken before they enter buildings. They're talking about when they go to restaurants that their servers will wear masks and gloves, and they'll be eating off of disposable plates. My thesis is that thermal cameras already on drones that your city would possess would support your community to reopen it and would also act with openness and transparency and show that you're willing to think out of the box and show vulnerabilities as you re-enter society under the new normal. And we brought our AT&amp;T drone team from AT&amp;T Smart Cities. Together, we have a combined 70 years of entrepreneurship, leadership, and AT&amp;T business base for Smart Cities has been around for approximately seven years. So I wanted to take this time to hand off to Jason Barton, who is our drone subject matter expert. He has a quick presentation that we'll go over through, and with this, you will see not only the use case for thermal cameras, but you'll also see other use cases, including crowd management for social distancing and using drones in high-risk areas to thwart thefts and burglaries.
Wonderful. Thank you, Angela.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, good morning, Jason.
Good morning. So here at AT&amp;T, we've had an active drone program for a few years now, and we've been primarily working with public safety and listening to what public safety agencies are telling us what they need, how we can help them grow their drone programs. And the coronavirus, this COVID response, has really hit everybody hard and hit everybody fast. So we've been looking back through video analytics and tools that we've been deploying for search and rescue, for accident response, and looking at the tools we deploy to public safety agencies to see how they can be applied in this COVID-19 response. And as the host has disabled screen sharing, can somebody turn that on for me so I can show you a quick document? And we can email this document to you afterwards.
Sure. Laura, or Arlene, are you able to enable that feature?
Taking a look at it right now. Just give us one second. We didn't know. Hold on one moment.
Sure. Not a problem. I know better than to ask Laura Taylor. She's always anticipating. So bear with us for a second.
Sure thing.
And I see Brad is with us. Is Brad part of your team in Atlanta or elsewhere?
Chicago.
Chicago. The windy city.
The windy city woke up with an inch of snow this morning.
And a 50-car pileup, too, right?
Yeah. Yep, that woke us up at like 6:00 AM, those fire trucks, so.
Jason, can you see? Can you share your screen now? There you go.
Yes, I see it, or part of it. Yes, that's great.
Okay, so we'll email you guys this document after the call. But basically, what we wanted to do was show the capabilities that the drones, combined with some AT&amp;T technology, drones that your public safety agencies probably already have today, can be combined, and we can do things that you just can't do otherwise. So for instance, live broadcasting and real-time collaboration. So when the officers or public safety agencies are putting drones up in the air, part of their problem is the data is trapped on that flight controller. That person's the only person able to see it. They're not able to share that data out and collaborate with other people inside the agency or outside the agency. So not only can you, with our tools, live broadcast, but you can collaborate and you can audio chat with the people that you're surveilling. So if you're putting a drone up over a park and there's a crowd of people having a barbecue, you're able to actually audio chat with those people out there. So your public safety agencies are maintaining a safe distance and able to say, hey, guys, pack it up and go home. Park is closed. You know, there's too many people here. Pack it up, go home. Also, the ability to record the event. So being able to go back post-event and use that for training, use it potentially in a court of law, use it to defend your officers, or use it to prosecute a group of people or find a group of people that are refusing to follow a lockdown order. The images here, so there's three images on the left. The first one is the flight controller that comes with the drones. You can see a thermal image on that. The second image down is a park. There's an officer and a pilot in training there. The image just below is that thermal image zoomed in, and you can see the main image there is the officer coughing into his elbow there, and it gives you real quick body temperature readings. So we can tell, we can't necessarily tell if that person is running a fever, or are they just jogging and exercising and hot, but we can separate out somebody whose body temperature is elevated from the people around them. So that person potentially is suffering from symptoms of the coronavirus. We can separate that person, and we can get that person away from the public safety agents, and then we can get them locked down. We can get them some medical attention and find out, does this person have the coronavirus or not? Maybe they just have the flu, but still, we can separate them out. And then, we already talked about monitoring and crowd guidance. So being able to tell a crowd of people, hey, pack it up and go home, from the drone, having a speaker on the drone and being able to talk to them, and the drones also have a microphone, so that people can communicate back. So maybe if somebody's there and injured or is suffering symptoms, they can tell you. So all of this is the kinds of things that we've been bringing together. We're already using a lot of this technology in fire response and search and rescue and swift water response when there's flash flooding. It's just taking the technology and adapting it for the situations that our public safety agencies are finding themselves in now.
What questions do you have on this?
What, and I apologize if I missed it or haven't seen it, or what does it really take? And in fact, I think our deputy mayor Gibson has some experience with drones, and I unfortunately do not. So really, for practical purposes, and I guess maybe real world, and I see it, and it looks amazing, what all does it take, or would it take, for Benita Springs to get involved with this, should we choose to go in that direction?
Well, if you have drones today, which many public safety agencies do, I'd be more surprised that you don't have them than if you did. It's a simple software application that they can download off the Apple App Store, and then we set up an account on the cloud side. So all this data is stored in the cloud. It's your data is your data. It's private. There is no, you know, I don't have access to your data. Nobody else does, no other public safety agency, unless you grant it. So it's a simple application they download. We set up the account, and five minutes of training. And the training can be done remotely. It's really easy. It's, the tools themselves are nearly identical as far as how they operate and they look to the current flight control software that the pilots are already using. So it's just some additional features that we add in.
Thank you. And what I'm going to do where I can't see everybody, and I apologize, I'm just going to go around by district. Councilwoman Amy Caramba?
I don't know what you would like me to comment on. I think it's interesting technology, but to me, it's just astounding that surveillance of our population could be done so easily. And to me, the concept is very alarming, and I don't see how that fits into our small-town charm kind of thing. I think that it has applications to safety officers, but you know, the city doesn't have it. That's a totally separate thing with the sheriff and the fire service. So where this might be intellectually interesting, I think we have a lot more other things that need to be done if we want to fight the coronavirus within our city.
Thank you, Amy. Jesse Purdon in District 2?
It's astounding technology, and no disrespect to the AT&amp;T folks. It's a little too Big Brother for my taste, but that's just my thoughts.
That's great. District 3, Laura Carr?
Good morning. Jason, is this a lease or an own program?
It's a software. It's a service. One comment that I would like to make is, we're not doing any facial recognition. It's thermal, and there are safeguards put in place. The location of the drone and the pilot and where the drone looked is all tracked specifically so somebody can go back and see, was there any abuse in the use of the technology? And then you know exactly who the offending abuser was, so you can stop it.
Right. Minimize, he said, she said, kind of thing. And how much does this run? A drone costs how much?
Drones are the ones that support these features are anywhere from $2,500 to about $35,000.
Well, overall, I must say I agree with what Amy said about this is alarming and kind of concerning and not well-suited, in my view, of what would really help us as a community to combat C-19. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. District 4, Chris Corey?
Chris, I believe you might still be on mute. Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I share the same concerns as the other council members. It sounds a little bit too much like what they do in China. I don't think we need Big Brother looking down and taking a thermal image and then sending somebody out to check the temperature of somebody. So I think we've given up a lot of personal liberties in terms of fighting this C-19 virus, but I think you have to draw the line at some point.
Thank you, Chris. Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson?
Yeah, actually, the same as everybody else. I think this is way too Orwellian. Ben Franklin said, anybody that would give up some essential liberties for some temporary safety deserves neither. Definitely is not for us, and I don't believe this is for America. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Councilman Fred Forbes, District 6?
Yeah, I would concur with the majority of council here that this is probably a good idea, but I think it would be not in the best interest of the Constitution and privacy and all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela and your team, do you have more information or anything else to add to your presentation at this time?
No, we don't have any additional information to share. We appreciate your feedback and your comments, and we will provide that PDF for you to review.
No, that's great. And have you worked with the sheriff's offices down this way or in other parts of the country?
Yes.
So here, you've worked with Lee Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department as well?
Not in your town, but in other parts of the country, yes, and in other parts of Florida.
Okay. Great. Well, if you want to share that information with us, that would be great, and other areas where this has worked with law agencies, I would be interested in looking at that and appreciate the feedback from everybody, appreciate the information. And I think, as everybody knows, we're all trying to do what we can do, when we can do it, as fast as we can do it, and not anybody on this, no disrespect, has all the answers. But we do know that we're trying our darndest to keep people safe. So I want to thank you and everybody at AT&amp;T for this presentation, and we'll look forward to reviewing that information. And when your health, safety, and welfare of a community with technology and liberty issues and safety issues and medical issues and HIPAA issues, I think we understand there's a lot of balancing to do, but thank you very, very much.
Okay. Thank you for the time. We really do appreciate the feedback.
Absolutely. Thanks for being with us this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel, is there any further discussion on that, or do we want to move along?
I just would like, you know, we have a workshop coming up on Wednesday, and we're supposed to be talking about these kinds of things together in a more interactive and dialogue kind of thing, and I think that that is the appropriate time for us to be exploring these kinds of things. I did spend some time just writing out for my own mind how I thought about how I would hope that we could at least consider going forward in the city with the conscious idea that, sort of the idea that Chris Corey brought up, that we have given up a lot of liberties, and that as a community, we could sit back and let others decide how we should go forward, or we could be part of the answer. And I am very much interested in exploring some of the concerns that have been expressed by this council in regard to the effect on business, on the effect on people, on the effect on communities, and how we could provide input certainly to the leak commissioners and also to the governor and to our president as they work to open up our society again. So I think we have a lot to talk about on Wednesday, and I for one are going to be giving suggestions to Arlene on the kinds of things I would like to hear from them, and I would hope that the rest of you would too also. I'm focusing on business because I think we should reach out to our particular businesses in Benita Springs and ask them what they think we should do. And I like to provide that feedback back to the Lee County Commissioners. So I don't know if anybody else is considering this, and I'd be very curious to hear what has been going through your minds and that we would discuss it in dialogue at our workshop. That's really what I like to see.
Great. Thank you, Amy.
And I just have one question. Could I just share my ideas with people through the email? Is that allowed to send it to everybody, or if we're going to discuss it in a workshop, Derek?
I would probably avoid that only because even though you may send an email with a list of items you'd like to discuss, if another council member sends a list, it's that back and forth that may occur. What I recommend is that all the council members ahead of the agenda setting for next week's meeting, send a list of their priorities and issues to Arlene and myself. And what we can do is we can prepare that list and the priorities and identify which council members had those items and get it out to you all collectively early, so you have time to think about it before the workshop. Thank you.
And I would concur with that. That would be the best suggestion. We can lay it out in a format for you and forward it to each of you.
And I think this is, we're not going to solve the problem in one workshop, but I think we have to start. I would be comfortable starting the dialogue so we all can have our best views about how we want to go forward and things we want to explore. It really has to be a team effort.
And as a reminder, we did invite Tiffany Esposito to participate in our workshop next week, as well as some of our local charity and service organizations as well.
I mean, I have some questions, particularly for both the business entity and the care
Yeah, very, very minor thing. All I was hoping was that the staff was developing a plan that when we do get the clearance to come back, we'll we'll have a well fought out plan. And they had a well fought out plan when we decided to start closing down the city facilities. And I just hope that they are working on this. I'm sure they are, but I just wanted to make the comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, we we are working on a plan. We're also continually discussing that with our community partners, our local jurisdictions with us so that we're um coinciding with them as well.
Thank you, Arlene. Okay, uh, hearing nothing else, we're going to move on to mayor and council member items. Item A is a discussion of aesthetics within city right of ways, and this is Councilwoman Amy Corumba, green sheet number twenty dash oh four dash oh nine nine. Amy.
Hi, I brought this forward because um uh on one of the relatively recent Quality Cities magazines, uh, there was an article about efforts that were being done at Coral Gables. Uh, I know that we have preemption restrictions on any kinds of um communication equipment that's put into the right of way that comes, I think, from the state. Um, but they they were able to with through a design ordinance uh guide the installation of these kinds of uh communication items to be aesthetically pleasing. So instead of just putting an ugly thing up in the middle of your right of way and then having it um, you know, uh rust and and decay over time, they were able to, you know, maintain the beautiful aspects to their right of ways. And when I wasn't thinking about uh COVID nineteen, I it sort of reminded me that this was something that we have been focusing on in the past. We had some concerns about uh the the installation of these things throughout our community. And I was just wondering if the council agreed that uh we could ask the staff to explore just what kinds of and uh what kinds of things that they incorporated into their ordinances and that we might be interested in doing it um in Bonita Springs. Uh, if this is something you want them to pursue, then, you know, we can do it. If not, we'll just let the uh the the interested parties just put their their communication items where they want, and we have very little control. I know we have very little control anyway, but I think from an aesthetic point of view, we might be able to say, well, if you're going to put it there, at least don't make it look ugly and take care of it. I think that's the gist of what their ordinance is. Uh, but we haven't really explored what they've done. Uh, I haven't called them and I and I don't know how much effort the staff is has done in that regard.
Amy, is there, I just had a question. Is there an area in particular, and I know that, and I don't necessarily want to single somebody or something out, but to my point, uh, freedom of speech and more information is more information. What 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 are your concerns in terms of aesthetics versus?
Well, I I mean, it it's all over the city. Any place where they can put installations, all they have to do is the way it is now, they just have to make a an application for a a building permit of some kind, and then they could put them wherever they need them, basically. But it, we don't, they, I think that in from if the article was correct and you could, I will, it's if you still have it, you can probably get a reference to it. It's um, let me see which one it is. The first quarter of twenty twenty, and it's on page twenty-three, uh was where they they pointed out the effort that had been done by Coral Gables. And I and I could just talk about our own community where I live is that we have an incredibly hard problem where all the uh communication companies have put in their own little private things to do whatever they have to do. They're not maintained. They're put in really weird places. Uh, and they cause eyesores. Uh, it's really an aesthetic thing. Uh, it has nothing to do with preventing them from going forward. It's just that if you're going to put it in, you know, put it someplace where it's sensible and and it's sensitive to the aesthetic needs of the community. But this is, we see it up and down every street in Bonita. I mean, we're just where we put the um uh the stat, the sculpture in front of City Hall. There are two, I don't know who it belongs to, but there are two communication little things sticking up there that we're trying to have them improve. Uh, and we've, and I think that that Art in Public Places have been working on that for eight months. I don't even know if they know who it belongs to. But I mean, part of it is a historic thing, but going forward, we're going to have more and more of these as as each individual company tries to um, you know, provide a needed service within the city. And we're not saying you shouldn't put it there, but put it there in a way that is sensitive to where you're putting it. And if there's a better place to put it or a different kind of equipment to go in so that we can, you know, not always be saying, oh, what is that ugly thing doing there? And then try to landscape around it, which is what happens. But again, I think, oh, Garrett, Derek is going to say what we can or cannot do, but my.
Going to ask, yeah, when you were done, Amy, I was going to say, drill down team, what have we got? No, thank you, Amy, for that. Thank you very much. Derek?
Uh, well, Mayor, Council, what I want to do is uh expound a little bit on what Councilwoman Corumba uh was discussing and then and then sort of give you some guidance on what you can do. Uh, the city of Bonita Springs was one of the first actually to adopt a this is all related to the five G rollout. Basically, the small cell towers that are being put in the right of ways that are not the new technology has to be much closer to the user. It's not, it's not the traditional big towers we see in the past or the monopoles. Um, when the legislature start legislature a couple of years ago started looking towards preempting local governments and controlling the way we would regulate or charge for the installation of these five G uh rollout in our right of ways. Uh, the city went forward, adopted an ordinance, became one of the the model ordinances within the state. Uh, the legislature did move forward and preempt the the city and most of many of the provisions of our ordinance are no longer enforceable. Uh, and and it was it was called the Florida Advanced Wireless uh Act. And what their their goal is to make it easy for for companies like like AT&T or others to to put these five G towers on. And and effectively what they say is we're limited in what we can do to restrict their locations, to restrict where they can go, to charge for them, and they're allowed to co-locate uh their antennas on our lights, on our our structures in the right of way. Um, it has continued to evolve since then. The FCC has got involved and actually said that states themselves are in violation of federal law by attempting to preempt these issues. So there's a, there's a battle going on at the federal level, but at the current state of the law is that in Florida, we can adopt regulations uh targeting historic districts, targeting aesthetic designs, and it will require those those companies that are trying to roll out the five G services to comply with those aesthetic regulations. So I like to think about it like this. We have a complete street program. If our complete street program, for instance, had a decorative um street lighting element that we had, this is several designs that we we wanted to use in the downtown or on the need to be trod or other areas in the city. We could restrict, you know, carriers from coming in and just slapping an ugly black box on our decorative uh lights. We could say that they have to do something that complies with the aesthetics that we have laid out in that program and that they would be required to co-locate and redesign their facilities to match ours. And that's probably where we need to be looking to towards going. Uh, that will give us a little bit more control what these things look like in our in our right of ways.
Do we have the ability to require some kind of guarantee about maintenance, or has that been preempted?
That that all those issues have been preempted.
Okay.
Aesthetics is the one area we can, we can, we can delay and we can cause them to to reconsider uh on those issues.
I think it would be useful to inquire about Coral Gables and see what they did. And I, and from my understanding, it was pretty much aesthetics.
Derek?
Yes, Fred.
Yeah, question. Uh, I I'm gathering from what you said, even if we were to able to adopt what Coral Gables did, we couldn't apply that retroactively to anything that's already here. Is that is that what the bottom line?
That that is correct, but but that uh we could still, we could still adopt something because talking with Matt and John, we have not had significant rollout yet in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Another issue whose timing is ripe. Absolutely. No doubt about it. Well, I, Amy, I would um, well, first off, thank you for bringing this forward. And uh a- ask our team if we could dig into what Coral Gables did and come back, you know, for another discussion before you say, Derek, before we get going here and have to work around items. Let's make sure we know where the items are going to be and how they're going to look.
Well, thank you. If that's what the the pleasure of the rest of the council is, I think we should at least explore the information.
Are there any objections, council, to exploring this?
Nope. Great idea, Amy. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I have support, Amy, and and we'd like to see some of this cleaned up as well and to do what it is that we can do uh to make it look better than than what I've seen up and down the road. So I think we ought to pursue it.
That's why I, thank you, Chris, for that. And that's why I asked for any objections. So I don't, and do I hear any objections? Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Amy, for bringing that forward. Okay, is a discussion of communication received from Riverside Park Artist Cottage Tenant Regarding Rent Payments. And this was brought forward by Council, our Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson and Councilman Jesse Purdon. It's green sheet number twenty dash oh four dash oh nine seven. Gentlemen.
Um, yeah, the uh, the main thing, we we got an email from uh John Pano uh stressing uh concerns about the artist cottages and some and the other artists there had the same concern um that since we closed the park, uh, they're not getting, you know, they effectively couldn't be there. So you know, what why, why would we be charging them rent? So um, my thought, I I don't know what Jesse's thought is. But since we we closed the park, maybe we shouldn't be charging them rent um until we we open the park back up again. So um, that's my thoughts. I I'd like to hear everybody else's thoughts. Um, the the big thing is it it is a, you know, kind of a a small amount to us. Um, but you know, there's some of these people, you know, not not uh working right now. You know, this could make a big difference for them. I I know we've gotten some of the rent payments this month, some partial payments. Um, so I'm not sure the best way to handle that if we just refund it or if we just hold it and apply it to uh when we do open it back up again. Um, but I'll uh I'll I'll pass on to uh to Jesse.
Thank you, Mike. Jesse.
Oh, Jesse, you're you're on there, you're on mute.
To the fact that the park is closed and they operate within the park, uh, even if they could operate, think about, uh, you know, the people who are in those, they get the artists, they have to sell things. They can't sell things because nobody's allowed in the park. Nobody's going to GTC, nobody's going to the kayak place because you can't be down in the park. So if we're the ones closing it, nobody's able to go down there. It's such a small amount and for them, it's such a big deal. And honestly, we've been trying to fill up those cottages. Now we have them full. It's a little bit of kindness that we could show that won't cost us very much at all, comparable to what it will mean to them. And it's the only, look, we can't help the whole world, but we can help them. And they're the only businesses in our park. So if through this virus, we're able to show kindness anywhere, this would be one of the places we'd be able to do it. And once again, it's a small amount of money. They're small businesses. We we've tried to beg, borrow and steal to get people actually in there. Now's a chance we can give back and it will cost us relatively nothing. So um I would really appreciate your support on that. Thanks.
Chime in. Uh, go ahead, Amy. I'm sorry.
No, I have some questions because first of all, um, have we inquired from uh the art and public places? Because I don't believe that's the case, that we are still struggling to um fill those. We have a list of people who are doing it. Um, and I also would like to, again, I I should know this because I'm the liaison to the art and public places. But what is our original purpose of having that? Are we providing um workspace for artists who can, who are can't do it easily in their own home? So I mean, what is the role there? Is it to really to provide a commercial space down there or is it to provide uh for artists' workplace? And are they prohibited from going to those cottages now? I I don't understand some of the statements that were made. Even if it's closed, they could still go. Mike still goes to his office.
Right, but it's right, but the difference is people will go to Mike's to get their bike fixed. People can't go down there to shop for art.
Well, they all have websites and they all have been pretty established. So they are um still able to make a livelihood, you know. I agree, it's a hardship.
Businesses that are in operating in our park. This will cost us nothing to help them. If we claim to care about businesses so much, let's help them.
Well, I I mean, I I'm not really against it, but I think we need to think, first of all, we do have a federal program that does that allows for paycheck um preservation kinds of things. So I think that they would all be eligible for that because they have been, you know, in interfered with because of COVID nineteen. Um, uh, and I know for at least the kayak thing, we're on a revenue, they pay on the basis of their revenue. So if their revenue is down, they're going to be paying less anyway. So that part is already taken care of. Um, I do am somewhat troubled about I think we need to rethink the whole, you know, what the whole purpose is down there and how we handle that. And the fact that some people have not paid their rent are, you know, it's troublesome. There should be some conversation about how we want to handle it in the future. And uh, you know, I I I I'm ambivalent about it. That's all I got to say, whether this is the right thing for us to do or not to do. And hopefully, you know, we're going to be open before too long. Uh, I don't know if we're going to be holding uh events down there, but you know, we're going to be in a more uh mobile situation. And that's one thing that we can talk about um on the on our Wednesday workshop about how to do that. I don't think we have any other quote businesses. Like, do we have a rental house or something somewhere? What else do we have where people are paying us money for leasing?
We we do have a rental house off of Terry Street and they have.
That's not a business, though. Uh, so the only relationship we have it with businesses is here, right?
Well, Amy. Amy points out a an important point and a clarification. We didn't close the park. The governor via the president, I guess, if you want to go that far, I mean, the president also with the state of emergency uh supported, but the governor insisted that we close as a city. So they are available to have federal programs. I mean, that's why the government is going trillions of dollars in debt. So while it's a small sum of money for us, I think we need to just, like Amy said, take in the whole picture. Because then are we going to then hear from other businesses saying, oh, can we, you know, get some kindness from City Hall and not pay our taxes? Can we waive this? Because so we just kind of tumble down into why is this person given the act of kindness and the other person not? So I I agree with Amy, though. Let's take it up in our workshop and focus more on how we can open up our society and not like the little tiny things. And I also, I agree with Amy that the businesses professionally, they contact the rentor and say, hey, I can't make rent. Can we work something out? By just not paying anything and not communicating is not very professional on their part.
They did reach out to us.
Uh, not in, they just.
After.
After. So it wasn't, it wasn't in a timely matter. But um, anyway, we could discuss it at Wednesday's workshop.
I don't, I would like to vote on it.
We do have a provision in um our contract, again, um, Nicole's not here, right? Um, where we have a lowered rent in the summer with the idea that there's fewer people who are in the park in the summertime off season. So I think that, isn't it, Arlene, the case that the rent is different for the summer?
Yeah, it is different this summer. I'm trying to get the number right now.
Yeah.
Who, while while Arlene's doing that, the one thing I would ask is if the council decides to move forward on this is that we 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 do the rent abatement on a prorated per the number of days that the the businesses are shut down due to some government order, whether it's us or the state or feds. Uh, and also that we, and and that will just make it easier because some of the tenants um have the are paid on are asking for relief for past payments, others for future payments, and it's better for us to just prorate it by the number of days that they're actually. And it's better for us to just prorate it by the number of days that they're actually under a lockdown order. Uh, that way, for an accounting purposes, it's easier. Uh, the other thing is that um, we probably to address, I think it was Councilman Gibson's comments. Uh, as far as monies that have been paid, we should just ask them, would they like it refunded or applied to future balances?
Now, thank you for that for Derek. And Arlene, I know you went through. So other than the artist cottages and the wonder gardens, that one rental home is the only example where there is quote unquote rent or business in city-owned property for with the private sector?
Um, well, technically, you do have a lease agreement with the nonprofit of the wonder gardens operating on that property, and we have a lease agreement.
But we all understand the economic realities there to help vitalize our downtown. And I put the artist cottage right in this same community. So um, I want to hear further discussion, but I am going to make the motion in agreement uh, with what Councilman Gibson and Councilman Purdon put forward. This is our way of showing what we can do.
What what exactly is the proposal? That I don't understand the proposal. That there is no rent or what? What is the proposal?
Um, my my proposal would be right now, uh, while the park is closed, uh, no rent. And as Derek said, uh, obviously, the best way to handle it is on a prorata, um, you know, from when it closed and when it reopened. Um, I I I just think it's in the best interest for the people that are down there to help, you know, give them a little uh helping hand. I I know Laura, you did uh mention, you know, that they might be able to apply for the CARES Act. Um, to to me, that it's almost a robbing computer to pay Paul situation, you know, taking from the taxpayers to to give, in this case, back to the taxpayers. Um, I I think just the easiest solution is to, uh, you know, go ahead and 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 go ahead and forgive it on a prorata basis until the park gets reopened. Um, you know, DeSantis's Safer at Home Act, I don't, I'm not sure if that actually closed the parks or if we did just to help comply with that. I mean, in a lot of cases, you know, there are still people walking around. Uh, they're all maintaining, you know, the six feet distance. Um, but I think, you know, while we're saying the park is officially closed, um, I I just don't think we should be collecting the rent.
Thanks for that, Mike. And I I find it interesting and it's kind of ironic from two completely different uh items or discussion items. We don't want Big Brother, but we want Big Brother when we feel it's convenient for us. So I guess I don't subscribe to that.
Hmm, an alternative is because um, really, the the role, what those um, artist cottages are supposed to do are are twofold. One is to provide a business environment for the people there, but the other one is just to provide them for a workspace. And when we interviewed the artists, they said, you know, we want to have our, we want to have a place where we can do our stuff because we can't do it out of a garage or wherever they were doing it. So um, and and I, do we, Mike, do you know, are people they're working or they're absolutely not there at all now?
Uh, pretty much not, not at all. Um, I think that they come and go mainly to check on the business.
So what you're saying is that they're using it pretty much as a business and this is why they don't want to pay them.
Well, I I think maybe, I think there may be some confusion also with the park being closed. Are they really allowed to be there? Um, so, yeah, like I said, I see that, you know, occasionally I'll see somebody, they'll go up and be there for a minute or so and then leave again. Um, like I said, I think mainly it's just so they can make sure nobody broke in or, you know, nothing, nothing's going on up there.
Uh, just to answer Council McCrum's question, as of May first, the rent will be a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Okay.
Question?
I would be more interested in in just extending that to whatever, whatever date we started doing this when we closed. I think we, I believe we closed the parks. Um, you know, to just extend that already, that provision that recognizes that there are different seasonal things. Where we don't have the 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 number of people that are going into the park. So that that makes a lot more sense to me. But I do think that this has opened up an interesting conversation um, that I will bring back to the, if we ever meet again, art and public places where we have to uh, understand, and it has to be a dialogue with this, the the council anyway, about what what the purpose is there and what role it plays for the city, because I don't think it's clear.
I agree.
Mayor, I would like to say, I, yeah, I, what role they play right now is maybe the fifth thing that I'm thinking about when I think about these people having to pay rent when they don't know how they're going to pay their FPL. There's only six places in the entire city where we can help people. Why wouldn't we? And I would like to call for a vote.
Would you like to make a motion, Jesse?
Could we just say that we, that is not the only way and only place we help people is those.
Say that, that's not what I said, Laura. Listen to what I said.
Okay, that's what I heard. Sorry.
Yeah.
Fred, did you have something? If not, I apologize. I thought I heard you, Fred. Okay, go ahead, Fred.
Yeah, are we not in the same, uh, don't we collect something for the use of the dock for the kayaks?
There's a separate agreement for the for the kayak launch, and that's based on a revenue share. There's a monthly report that you all receive from the, from from our rental there. The artist cottages are a base month rent. They're uh two fifty a month in season, one fifty a month out of season. Uh, you just recently uh raised the rent prior to coronavirus issues going on to three hundred a month.
Hmm, okay. I'm just surprised that that's not in the discussion because I would think that this affects them as much as the artist cottages.
Uh, the the correspondence you received, I, if I understand correctly, is to consider waiving or 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 reduce however, uh, providing uh relief for all of the cottages, including the canoe and kayak vendor.
That that hasn't been mentioned specifically, so.
Jesse, were you gonna make a motion?
Yeah, looking, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on it.
Um, yeah, actually, uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe you made the motion and and I seconded with a little bit of clarification.
Okay.
Maybe Derek can sum up what the motion is.
Yeah, Derek, I mean, in terms of the proration and the number of days and the technical, if Derek, if you could be.
From from everything that I heard, the the motion appears to be uh to to provide rent abatement for, on a prorata basis, for every day that the the properties are under some form of uh lockdown or stay-at-home order. And I'm going to add to that, and I would hope that everyone would agree, that, you know, that should be based on the rents that were due during that timeframe. Not so if this goes into the next month and the summer hours come in and it's reduced, it would be based on when those orders went into effect.
Yes. And just to drill one question further, Derek, in terms of the proration, the proration would be a hundred percent per day.
Correct.
It's not fifty cents on the dollar per day, it's one hundred on the dollar per day.
Right, we, and we would ask the, based on uh, Councilman Deputy Mayor Gibson's comments, we would ask those who have paid their rent, whether they'd like that refunded or set aside for future end payments.
Great. Thank you, Derek.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could just, oh, Mayor, I'm sorry, can I clarify one thing? I just wanted to see if this would be part of city council's consideration is we do provide access to the bathroom at the Lyles Hotel. And during the crisis, we have been doing extra cleanings of that bathroom uh, because of providing that public access to them. Is that something you all want to maintain access to? Um, or would we be able to stop service there so we can have a little reduction in the extra cleanings we're doing?
Well, off off the top of my head, I would say keep them open.
Yeah, that that they would still be, I mean, whether they pay the rent or not, they still need to check on their houses and their little cottages and what they're doing. So somebody, who, are they the only people that use it? And it's the people in the, we we still have Lyles Hotel open for building permits or something.
Lyles Hotel is open for staff currently, and then uh, there, there is a fob, a key fob provided to the artist cottages to utilize the bathroom.
I think you should continue it.
Is there any objections, counsel, um, to keeping the bathrooms open?
Well, is there a need, Arlene? Is, are the people saying we're cleaning what we just cleaned yesterday? Or is there a need to have the extra cleanings?
We're doing the extra cleanings on Sunday because of the use of the cottages over, to provide them access over the weekends. That's why we're doing extra cleanings.
And it's just the people, just the six, not even six, just the people in the cottages that can use it. It's not their well, patrons can't, but in.
You know, pay, if they're escorted with the vet, with the vendor, they're able to allow their patrons to utilize the bathroom as well on weekends.
Well, so if they're not there and it's only staff that has access, then why would we continue clean, do extra cleanings? You're saying that they're not using the cottages and we're, the downtown is closed and people can't go in anyway. So why would we do the extra cleanings?
Currently, we are providing access to the tenants. So if they're utilizing their cottage, they can use the bathrooms as well.
So they are utilizing their cottages. I'm confused because I I I thought they weren't utilizing their cottages. They're not using it. They're just checking to make sure there's no vandalism. And so why would we then have to worry about extra use of the bathrooms?
Laura, I think you raised some really good points, and my question would be, Arlene, and I've heard it, but I want to ask it. Is the general public that might be coming into the park and going by the bathrooms, is there any access for the general public or is it strictly for the cottages?
No, Mayor, there's, it is not public access to that bathroom. That's an internal building to to the Lyles. It's only provided by a key fob access to the tenants of the cottages.
Well, then what, so then I, to Laura's point, for, and I I apologize, there was some confusion on my part. Um, I think the bathroom should be cleaned, but is there a need for an extra clean at this point?
Correct. If if the artist cottages will not be utilizing the cottages. And at this point, staff has not stopped the use of the cottages. Of course, it's up to the tenant where they'd like to go. Um, but we've continued to provide out of, out of cautionary purposes, continued cleanings because should they utilize it over the weekend, we wanted to make sure it was kept up.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Fred.
Why don't we simply send a notice to the uh cottages that the restrooms will be closed, the building locked on Sunday? And so, you know, if you need to understand, if you come down there, the restrooms won't be available Sunday, and we don't have to do it. Because they wouldn't, normally, they wouldn't be coming down anyway, but they're given notice that they'll be closed on Sunday, period. Now, get you out of the extra clean.
Yeah, I I, I agree with that, Fred, and I apologize. I was, there was some confusion on my part at the beginning. So I apologize about the bathroom cleaning. Point, Laura, thank you.
Yeah, and I I agree. I don't think we need the extra cleaning.
Okay, so Derek, I'm sorry.
Derek, you want to sum up the motion so we can have a vote?
I I think the motion still still stands at for the rent abatement to rent, abated on a prorata basis. And to ask those who have paid whether they would like a refund or to uh, apply towards future rent payments. Um, the issue with the, with the cleaning, I think is already direction to Arlene.
Uh huh. Why, why don't we just say, well, when we decide if we vote yes, um, to just hold the money and apply it in the future?
You can choose to do that as well.
Yeah, but, okay, so, thank you.
Was that a, is that a formal uh change to it or is that we're going to give them the option? Because I'd like to give them the option.
We're gonna vote, so however you guys want to, I just know what I'm voting.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would prefer to uh, uh, you know, us keep, I would give them the option. Uh, because the main thing, if they're, you know, really need the money, then I'm sure they're going to ask for the money back. If they could do without it, then I'm sure they'd say, put it in towards the next month.
And and for the record, just, uh, everybody probably got a a an email from Pano saying that he's watching and that uh CGTCAX paid their rent on time and sent the letter before rent was due to consider waiving rent while the park was closed. So he did not not pay it, just to clarify the record on that.
I didn't say John didn't, Jesse.
I didn't say you did. I didn't say you did. I didn't even say you specifically. I was clearing the record.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here and call the question. I made the original motion and I'm gonna stick with giving the tenants the option. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
No.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion on that team? Okay, gonna move on to the next item, which was an addendum. I had a, uh, we've been working with the staff and the team and Dr. Antonucci at Lee Health and with Senator Pasadomo, County Commissioner Ray Sandelli and Fire Chief Greg Dewitt. And we are going to have a virtual town hall, Benita Springs Virtual Town Hall COVID nineteen tomorrow, Thursday, April sixteenth at three PM. And Laura Taylor, if I could ask you just to kind of run through some of those logistics for, obviously, the benefit of the council, who I'm sure by now with the, with these Zoom meetings, but for anybody that might need special instructions on how to participate?
Sure, Mayor. Um, so this will be view, viewable, the same way all of our city workshops and our city council meetings have been. The the same page and same link on the city website will um, take you to to the meeting on the website. Um, it will not show, of course, until three PM when it starts. Um, it will be viewable on Comcast Channel ninety-eight, Summit Broadband Cable Channel ninety-six, Hotwire Channel three ninety-eight, uh, CenturyLink Prism TV Channel eighty-seven. Um, it will also be rebroadcast on cable as well in the city, as well as on the city website.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions or thoughts on that? I certainly hope you can all join us. Thank you so very much and Laura and the entire team for for the work and all of our panel that'll be joining us to get this information out to our residents of Benita Springs. Um, the next item.
Just a question, Mayor, on that. I stated, in order to log on, can we, uh, you know, there's a long uh HTTP thing. Is that, can you just click on that from the city website or do you have to type all that stuff in?
We have shared, um, on the actual graphic, we shared the link so that you would be able to um, share it with other folks and we wouldn't break the link. But we have been putting it in the text of, um, when we've been e-blasting it or putting on social media, the link where you can actually click. So if you'd like, we can share that with you as well, and you're welcome to share the link.
Well, I'm more concerned about can people go to the city of Benita Springs and just click on that if they want to do it?
Yes, so they could go to the city of Benita Springs, um, and then the same instructions would apply. They go to the, how do I uh watch a meeting live? And it takes them directly to view the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Amy. Okay, in public comment, we've covered that those will be read in to the record. Uh, city attorney's items, Derek Rooney.
Uh, thank you, counsel. Uh, what I have before you is an impact fee reimbursement agreement. Um, the the short, the short of this is, uh, we do not, when we work with developers towards impact fee credits, uh, we do not currently, under our code, provide for reimbursement after the fact when they they have paid. Um, we have done this a handful of times. We do it through an agreement so that everyone is is clear as what their roles and responsibilities are. The project downtown, the Preserve at Oak Creek, has been in discussions and development with the city since two thousand fourteen. Over that time and through, I believe, two successive developers, uh, the the city has made multiple requests of the development uh, to work on downtown infrastructure improvements, some of which were in a bonus density agreement, which is attached to the green sheet. Uh, in order to help kickstart the revitalization of our downtown projects. Um, the, the developer that ultimately finished the project uh, did not enter into an agreement ahead of time with the city, but near the end of their completion, they had tallied up. uh, did not enter into an agreement ahead of time with the city, but near the end of their completion, they had tallied up, uh, about, uh, almost $1.2 million in expenses of infrastructure items that they put in at the request of the city. Uh, those, those document, those items were documented with the city, but, uh, it was unclear as to whether we were going to give them credits for the work that they had done, even though, uh, most of that work would have been eligible for impact fee credits under our code had they, uh, made such arrangements ahead of time. Uh, we have gone through the list of improvements, uh, many of the improvements, uh, almost six or $700,000 worth, we do not feel are eligible for impact fee credits. Uh, but the remainder we do feel is eligible and we've been working on, effectively on a settlement of all terms with them for about a year. So what you see before you is, uh, basically a process by which they will be able to finish completion of some of the, uh, infrastructure improvements. Not all of them are completed at this time. Uh, but they will finish those infrastructure improvements and submit as, as any developer would for impact fee credits, uh, once they have been reviewed and accepted by, by the city staff. And Matt and John are here who have been involved in the process and are aware of the improvements, um, and to give you a little bit more backup. Uh, but what I would probably summarize is, is the, the, the best I heard summary yesterday was, w- we got, uh, we maybe not got a great project, but we got some great infrastructure out of it.
No, thank you for that, Derek, and I'm gonna dive in here. I had a few conversations, obviously, with you, Derek, Arlene and, and Matt separately, just because he wasn't on our, our call. But I, um, Matt, I'd like to ask you to share some thoughts, um, of our discussion. And I just want to be clear for the record. There were, from a former counsel and/or a former city employee, and I'll just leave it at that. Probably the best way to sum it up, there was some confusion on what we, and I just want to be very, very clear about that. I don't want to sweep that under the rug. I don't want to sidestep it, but I do want to proceed professionally and legally. But I just, i- it's a new day, it's 2020. It's not 2013 or 2014 when promises were made and dirt was getting tossed and discussions were had by the city and this group. And I just, I guess I'll leave it at that, Matt, and ask for your thoughts at this point of, you know, basically based on our discussion or any other thoughts you have, Matt?
Uh, just briefly, Derek probably did a pretty decent job, um, of discussing it. You know, originally, I think the developer was looking for a larger amount. Um, some of that confusion that, that you alluded to, Mayor, I think, uh, was surrounded around some costs that ultimately were not eligible, uh, relational to undergrounding of electric facilities, which they did do, uh, which is a sizable expense, as we all know. Um, but ultimately not eligible for impact fee credits. They were able to do improvements along the corridor, um, that greatly improved the city's infrastructure along Dean Street. Um, chiefly, they were able to, to eliminate a chronic problem that we had heard from the elementary school regarding, um, puddling, ponding, uh, along the sidewalk where the school kids coming off of the, the buses would have to actually step into the water. The, the existing pre-project drainage infrastructure along Dean Street did not really allow for that water to easily be drained away. Um, so the, the really, the only ability to address that effectively is if you were to rebuild the road. With this project, uh, Mosaic didn't really plan on rebuilding the road. They were just going to be installing drainage along the south side. But ultimately, um, their project did pull them into the roadway, so we did ask them to do those drainage improvements. Uh, happy to say that the sidewalk in front of the elementary school is now dry and, and will be, uh, when we get a rain event because they were able to install drainage. Um, while they were working in the roadway, trying to, trying to tie all that stuff back together, uh, un- unfortunately, they, they discovered that Dean Street is one of our oldest streets in the city. And over the course of 50, 60 years, it had been widened in a way that, um, did not allow them to, to easily tie in as they had originally contemplated the, the new asphalt. So ultimately, they had to rebuild a portion of Dean Street that was probably not anything any of us had contemplated. Um, but we did end up with, with a much better product, uh, infrastructure-wise.
Thank you, Matt. Counsel?
Make a motion to accept.
Uh, Mayor, I appreciate, I want to just thank you for.
And I'll second that, Fred, and then Amy for the question, thank you.
I've got a comment too, yes.
Okay, may I speak?
Yes.
I'm up. No, I want to thank you for bringing that forward because even though I wasn't on the conversation, obviously, with you and, uh, Derek and Matt, w- we had virtually the same conversation when I had my, my talk with them. And I was troubled, um, by the presentation of the green sheet, which I thought was not as forthright as I would like to see. And I was, I was confused about what they were saying. And I, and I think the conversation that Matt just had, uh, publicly was the same one that I had on the tele, uh, telephone. And I do think that Derek's solution is a good one to just move on from where we are. But I, one of the things that I discussed with him and with, uh, Arlene was that, once this is over, that, I mean, what we're doing right now, where we can have really real conversations in person, I think we want to, uh, review the procedures, administr- administrative procedures that we have, so this never happens again. There are lots of issues that were brought up that troubled me. And this is not the only, um, project where I've had troubling thoughts about how we do things. And I just think we, whatever the procedures we have, I think they should be apparent and they should be followed. Um, so I, I hope that the council would agree that we have some kind of conversation with, we don't have to do it right now because nobody's doing applications, uh, because we're all sitting at home being safe. But I think that soon after, we should, uh, put that on the agenda to review and I hope the council would approve of that. But thank you for bringing it forth because I was concerned about, uh, the transparency and I, and I appreciate your bringing it up, Mayor.
No, absolutely. Thank you, Amy. Uh, District Two, Jesse Purden.
Yeah, one of the, I mean, main things I heard on the campaign trail about this project, you know, people were very upset. And one of the things they didn't really grasp is that this was, this has been years and years in the coming. They're only now seeing the physical components of it. So this was agreed to in administration ago and a long time ago. But, you know, some of the things that I had an issue with, look, there's no elevator, it's three floors and it's stick. And it was sold to us as affordable housing and it's not affordable. Be that as it may, they wanted a million dollars, we're only giving them $600,000 and they've truly have made the appropriate infrastructure improvements on Dean. I'm good with it.
Thank you, Jesse. Uh, Laura, District Three, I'm just gonna go around the horn if that's all right with everybody. Laura?
Yes, um, I'd like to know where we stand as a city on testing for the C-19 virus. Where's testing? When can we get it? How many tests? Because we're gonna have to prove to the governor.
Lauren, I'm sorry, but for this, for the, just for this, um, just for the Mosaic discussion at the moment, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Laura.
Yeah, I was on mute.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, no.
You're okay? Okay, thanks, Laura. Uh, Chris Corey, District Four.
Just want to make sure that we're not reimbursing more than the reasonable cost of, uh, things like roadways and sidewalks and that those, what we're paying the impact fees for back, giving the credits for, uh, meet the standards of, for construction that the city has. And I, I've been told that by Derek that that's the case. Uh, and that the kinds of projects or that what we're given the credit for would have been done eventually anyway in the city to improve, uh, the amenities of downtown, to give additional capacity to what we see as a growth in population and so forth. So I don't, I don't really have a problem with the agreement. I agree with Amy that we should, uh, make sure we look back and use it as a teaching moment or learning moment and adjust whatever our procedures are going forward so that we don't run into this again.
Chris, I will give you an enthusiastic round of applause for that, um, absolutely. And I don't want to drag it out, but I do want the public to know that will not be happening as we move forward in Benita Springs, that same type of agreement, I guess you would say, or procedure. So thank you, Chris, and thank you, Amy, for pointing that out and Jesse as well. Uh, uh, Councilman Gibson, District Five.
Um, yeah, no, I, I know, uh, staff has looked at this, so, uh, if staff is, uh, fine, you know, they, they didn't get the whole amount. You know, we, we prorated it out to what they, they have done and what's acceptable. Um, so this is, uh, perfectly fine with me. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Fred?
Well, you're muted, Fred.
Fred, we can't hear you. Fred?
I'm very satisfied with Derek's explanation and staff's explanation. And I, I think we, uh, need to move on, but I, I agree that we cannot do this, have this type of arrangement in the future.
And, and, and counsel, just for the, just to address those comments, you know, it's not just the liability that we risk when we have miscommunications, what we ask people to, what we, what we promise them will, will contribute. It also works as a disincentive to people working with us by not having it laid out more clearly. So we will, we will work on tidying up those procedures.
Great, thank you, counsel. Thanks, Derek. Thanks, everybody. There's been a motion and a second, uh, to approve the recommendation. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purden?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Uh, Derek, anything else to add?
I have nothing else to add at this time.
Great.
Mayor, just to clarify, if I could ask Derek to confirm that that is a cash payment and not a credit? Because I know there was some interchanging of words.
It, it's because they've already paid the impact fee credits, it'll be a cash payment back to them, but it'll be amounts that they've already paid. So it'll be a refund, effectively.
And, and thank you. And of course, the vote has happened, but I, one of the things I go back to, counsel, that we discussed on Matt yesterday was a dock or a, a ramp access. And, um, I apologize, I didn't bring that up earlier, but where do, where are we with that ramp, Matt, or public access?
So I'll let, I'll let Derek chime in a little bit, but I, the, the ramp, it's not a ramp, it's a kayak launch onto Oak Creek. Um, and it, it does not appear that it's been constructed yet, so that is in the agreement. But I, I did confirm with Derek and please, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they do not construct that for some unforeseen reason, they would not be eligible for those fees per the structure of this agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, c- consider the agreement a not to exceed amount based on their engineer's estimate. So what they will do with all these improvements is they will submit the invoices and the city will review to see if we're accepting the infrastructure. If the infrastructure is acceptable to us, this, this goes to, uh, Count, uh, Councilman Corey's point. We have to make sure it's designed per the designs, that it meets our standards. And after that point, only then would we, we give them any reimbursement. So if they don't complete it, or they don't dedicate the land that's for items that have already been built, then there won't be any reimbursement.
No, no laundry, I think I said to Matt Feeny yesterday.
Uh, Mayor, but I'm glad you brought that up because that provision to provide a kayak la- launch came from an agreement where they got bonus density in order, and they had to deliver some things. So if they haven't delivered those things, I would be in favor of withholding some kind, you know, before we pay them back, we should take into account what the value, I think we have in the agreement, I don't, there's a, a number that they put in there for the kayak launch. And I think we should withhold that until they deliver that. Because otherwise, we won't have any way of either having them provide that, which was already agreed to, and we won't have any way of paying for it ourselves. So what do you think, Derek?
Yeah, no, our, our code already provides a process by which they would submit for the, for the amounts. And it requires that everything be completed, accepted and warranted to the city. So we, we have a process for that and, and they will, right now, they're showing, uh, partially for stuff that's constructed and other things, it's engineers' estimates. Uh, and so those engineers' estimates are higher, but no matter what that amount comes in, we are capping it at the amounts provided in this agreement.
But I don't, they won't. I don't understand how you are providing for the fact that they're going to do what they said they were going to do, which doesn't come under, this agreement doesn't have anything to do with that kayak.
It, it does. It, it provides for that there, the kayak launches eligible for impact fee credits. But they have to submit for those credits or that, those dollars, the same as they would for any other public infrastructure prod, project, like a road. Until those, those items are turned over to us and accepted and completed form, there is no reimbursement.
These are additional credits outside of what we just agreed to today? What, I, you're confusing me.
No, no, there's no, there's no additional, it's, it's, there's only one set of, of, of monies that's going for. The, the bonus density agreement had estimates for the values, but it did not provide any compensation other than the, the bonus density itself.
That's the point. How do we, how do we be assured that they're going to provide the kayak launch?
If, okay, so let, there's two separate issues. If they don't provide the kayak launch, then they'll be in violation of their development order. Because their development order gives them a number of, amount of density, which they will not be entitled to because they did not provide the infrastructure.
So then what do we do?
Impact fee reimbursement, well, that would be a, we would basically cite them as for violation of development order. We'd start code enforcement proceedings, we withhold future approvals, including certificates of occupancy on the project. Um, for reimbursement of any impact fee pays, they won't get it unless that project is also completed.
But Derek, if they don't complete it, what I think Amy's saying is then we want to hold back enough money so that we can.
They, they don't, they don't get any money until they complete it and it's been accepted.
And there was some confusion, Amy, believe me, I was.
Yeah, I, I.
Questions, yes, I know, I know.
I'll talk to you privately, but it sounds like double talk to me.
Well, and I just want to be clear and follow up on Amy's point, Derek. The $600,000 and Matt, that, that we just approved in no way, shape, form, manner, uh, or creative imagination includes that launch?
No, no, it, it does include that launch.
Yeah. How does it include the launch? It's not listed that way.
It, it is listed in the agreement.
It's listed.
Launch is listed in the agreement. It is.
It's a listed in, is.
The impact fee reimbursement agreement.
It's listed, I asked you that before, it's, it's one of the things that's listed in the $600,000 that we just agreed to. So if they don't, then we're gonna reduce that by a, a 100,000 something?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And, and then I think, Amy, and I, and I, I think my thought process is very similar to yours on this one. We have approved up to the six hundred. If they do everything else stated and for whatever reason don't do the kayak launch, they're only gonna get 500. They won't get the six. And Derek, just, let's keep it simple, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And it.
Yes.
Thank you. Tell me five times and eventually I'll get it, team. So thank you. Uh, counsel, is there any other discussion on this item? Okay, and Derek, you have nothing else. Um, Arlene, we're gonna move on to city manager items, please.
Uh, at this time, I'd like John Dahmer to come in and to give you an update, um, on our stormwater data collection efforts to this time.
Morning, Mayor, counsel. How is everybody?
Good morning, John.
Good morning. Just for those who have been on council, this is a quick update. For those of you who are new, I'll give you a brief background as to why we're doing this. Um, shortly after Irma, the council decided that we needed to take a look at several things. One was infrastructure that was supposed to be in place to handle our stormwater. Uh, second were our regulations and the third were different standards for, for building. Uh, to date, we have started collecting and have collected almost all of the permits, uh, east of US 41, but that were, uh, approved previously. Uh, this was a pretty monumental task because those permits, uh, were substantial. And even projects like, uh, Palmira or Benita National were done, done under one permit, they were done under multiple permits. So we've had employees pulling those down and pulling records, not only from development orders, but also from, uh, the Water Management District. Additionally, we have recently adopted some, uh, changes to our Land Development Code, Chapter Three, in terms of development standards for, uh, drainage and requiring different, uh, standards and different reviews. in terms of development standards for drainage and requiring different standards and different review, including the ICPR model for all projects to submit. And we've had several projects that have already turned that data in, including Southlinks, which was previously known as Burnwood on Benea Beach Road, and also the Cardroom. So we've been working through the modeling on those two projects. And in addition, we have adopted recently changes to the single-family drainage requirements. So now, single-family houses, especially those in established neighborhoods, are providing us more information on how drainage is going to work, which is a huge deal because, as you remember, you have houses that were built anywhere from the 40s to the 60s that were built on a much different elevation than houses that are currently required to build under FEMA's regulations. And there has been a real disconnect on how you handle that stormwater from those new houses and how it negatively impacted previous residences. So I congratulate all of you on adopting those standards. They have made a big difference recently. And also, as we continue to collect some of the stormwater permitting data, we will also start to look at what's in the ground and what's been maintained and who is in control of what. So we can make sure that as these things come up in the future, our stormwater process and stormwater infrastructure is as solid as it can be or as solid as it was approved to be. So I don't know if there's any questions, but that is your quick update on stormwater.
Thanks, John. Members, counsel, questions for John? Or comments?
Just, just a couple of questions. Did you say this is east of 41?
Yes, ma'am. We are now, we are now into the west of 41 neighborhood. Benea Bay, Pelican Landing, some of the older areas north of Benea Beach Road. Those are going to be a little more difficult. If you remember our initial discussions, we started out east with Benea National and worked our way west through the city, mainly because a lot of the permits that we're getting into now are very old or we're dealing with subdivisions that never had permits. So tracking these down is going to be a little more time consuming than the previous work.
Okay, that brings me to my second question, whether you uncovered any areas that didn't have, that weren't subject to stormwater management permits? And I guess once we're all done, we're going to be able to assess the needs of the city in regard to what we might have to do for those areas one way or the other, or.
What we can do, we're all. Correct. When we're all in the same room together, I can show you some, some maps of areas that include the permitted area. And obviously, you'll be able to see those areas that were not required to get permits. Those are generally the older areas of the city that were developed prior to any real land development regulations. So some of those have been addressed with our downtown improvements, and some of those have been addressed with recent subdivisions that have redeveloped older areas, but those places that have not redeveloped really have no standards or infrastructure in place.
Well, so, and they, they could be a cause of problem, so we, it's good that we are aware of that information at least.
They, they could be, but once we have all this information together, we'll have the whole picture, which is going to make it a lot easier to figure out who, who, where, and why, and when.
Okay, thank you for that effort.
Yes, ma'am.
Other members of council?
Yeah, I have one.
Thanks, Fred.
John, on the, where they've run the model on new, new things that were going on? Have you had any instances where they had to make a change to their system to make the model say they passed?
Not yet, but we're really early in this. The Cardroom, as my understanding, went through pretty quickly, mainly because of the size and the drainage that was already in place. We're working with Southlinks right now, and Southlinks, I think, had been pretty well documented. So there's not a whole lot of questions, but there is some offsite discussions that we're having with them as it gets closer to the Imperial River. And I know that they're going back and forth right now with some of that data. We've also had a request for an application that's coming in on the north side of Beach Road and that general area. And they're going to be applying early or turning their ICPR model in early, so we can have those discussions as early as the zoning hearings. So it, it has been something that it took a little bit to get going, but now that it's, it's in place, has seemed to provide some pretty good data.
Good.
At least in the limited projects where we've seen it. Yes, sir. Mr. Corey, I can't hear you, sir. I still can't hear you.
Chris, I think.
I think you're on mute, sir.
You may want to hang up and then call back. Sometimes that helps.
I believe he has to take the headphones out.
Oh, okay.
He has to unplug the headphones.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Still learning how to do all this stuff. We've had a couple of areas in Benea Bay since sea level's been reset that our pathways have flooded, and we're having to raise those pathways and deal with some swamps that need, needs further work to be able to get the water out to the Imperial River. So one of the things I'm concerned about long-term is, is the impact of global warming, sea level rise and so forth, and what that's going to do to stormwater systems. And the need, if we're having to spend $700,000 in Benea Bay just to raise two pathways for about a total of 500 feet, then I can only imagine what the problem would be if we had to get into a lot of this kind of work for the city. So I'm glad you're doing all this.
Yes, sir.
And to handle what we're going to be facing down the road.
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks. Other members of council? Derek, I see your hand.
When you're done with this item, I have something to discuss on the last item before moving on.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, counsel of John?
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Arlene? Or Derek, you want, maybe now's a good time?
Yeah, no, I just want to move on to something because I realize that maybe with all the confusion on the last item and the discussion of the various points, that something might have been missed. And I don't want to miscommunicate to you, or, you know, I'm not, I'm fine to admit it when I'm wrong. But the dollar amount that I discussed is $640,000. That's for the items that are listed in the agreement, which are eligible for road impact fee credits. If you read the agreement, there's another $180,000 that they may be eligible for. That is the improvements done for this, to improve the school. Just to, because that may not have been clear, unless Matt's shaking me out, shaking me out, it's the infiltration items, Matt.
Well, Derek, I, I read it, and I'll let John Dahmer chime in, but I believe it is for a conveyance that had been originally contemplated during the initial zoning of this to send water south across their property and out. It has nothing to do with the school.
Right, no, you're, you're.
I don't know what it contains the other, but that's kind of beyond my bailiwick. You'll need to talk to John on that.
Yeah, and maybe John just explain that a little bit. That is, that is one of the amounts that we asked them to do that doesn't, it's not, it's not to trigger really by their project, but it is something that is, was, that may not be eligible for impact fee credits because we're trying to determine whether or not those improvements add capacity to our road system. John, did you drop off, or are you still there?
No, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The, the discussion on that water conveyance through the property actually goes back to a time when this was two separate projects. And there was a mixed-use plan development to the west, fronted on the old US 41, and there was a multifamily project to the east. And when those projects were combined, we had discussed with them the idea of keeping that conveyance that was still running from the north to the south. That was already discussed under the previous zoning approvals. It was one of the things that they had agreed to do mainly because there's requirements for them to handle a certain amount of it. And also, because they were early in the design phase, they were able to accommodate some of that without too much difficulty. So the actual agreement to that goes back prior to, to at least my involvement, when it was two separate projects. But bringing that forward into the single project is where we had discussions with them on keeping that water flowing through the property so that it could get to the river.
I just want to make sure nobody missed on that, that one improvement that we haven't really discussed at all.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. Arlene?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into my update on the city's response to COVID-19, I just did want to clarify for council's information that you, you all had received a correspondence from Carol Green encouraging us to provide correspondence from the mayor in support of our $750,000 request. Staff will be working on that. We just want to make sure council was aware. They'll be working on that for the, for the mayor's signature.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Amy, I'm sorry.
I, I was going to bring that up in the council thing because it wasn't on the agenda, but I very much am in favor of sending that letter out and trying to continue the pressure so that we do get our, our funding that we've been asking for for two years.
Yes, indeed. And I responded to Carol, I obviously didn't put the other council member on it, but I did respond to Carol this morning with that and look forward to that letter and check, double checking for typos, and then we'll get it up to the governor.
Okay, good.
Thank you. We did want to provide you with some updated numbers today. As of 8:30 this morning on the Department of Health's dashboard, there were 21,628 cases in Florida, 571 deaths in Florida. Lee County has 657 reported cases and 19 deaths. In ZIP Code 34134, there are 14 cases. In ZIP Code 34135, there are 46 cases. To, to be clear, we have asked, and they do not provide death statistics via ZIP Code information. We did want to give you a little bit of information on compliance. We have noticed a little bit of pickup, but our folks are complying in our depot park as well as Riverside by our picnic tables. One of the reasons I think that it's being a little bit more utilized is that we do provide free Wi-Fi in our parks. So we're hopeful that folks can utilize that as long as they're maintaining the proper social distancing. Code enforcement has visited all of our high-traffic essential businesses. We've covered all convenience stores, gas stations, small grocery stores. And then we're into the next level of rural king and other service industries, providing laminated information, Department of Health cards and more educational materials. Our folks have been continually on route with the sheriff's office on our beaches. We are seeing compliance there as well. We are investigating the Airbnb's HomeAway as well and providing information to them. Not all of them are registered with the city. If they're the short-term rental, some of them are exempt. So when we provided that information on the web, or we find the, the rental, we're making sure we're providing that information to them. We are aware of about 30 to 40 that possibly have not registered with Department of Business of Professional Regulation, and we're only providing educational information to those folks as well at this time. To give you a little bit of Lee Health statistics, as of yesterday, around 3:30 our call, conference call, Lee Health, Dr. Antonucci had provided that there was a 6,455 specimens sent for testing, 74 positive COVID patients in hospital, 104 have been discharged. They have 15 PUIs, 179 employees have been quarantined, 31 employees have tested positive, 165 specimens collected through their mobile collection sites that day, 869 virtual or MyChart visits. They are at a 55% bed capacity with a 9% being COVID patients. And currently, there are zero tests pending. Also, with our call, I know that Councilman Carr had asked, we are not aware with, through Lee County EOC, that there is any shortage of testing that we're hearing about in our area.
Great. Thank you, Arlene. Counsel, questions for Arlene, or?
Yeah, are we setting up a testing center for our citizen, city? We, we have not heard that Lee Health or Department of Health is setting up a testing center. I believe the two they currently have is in Fort Myers and Cape Coral. And the one in Cape Coral, they actually closed on Sunday for no appointments. So I don't know, should we tell our citizens to go get tested so we can open up sooner? Because how do we open up? We have to show our citizens that there's confidence, that they're not going to get infected and, right, and get hospitalized or anything like that. How are we going to open? What's the procedure that we're putting in place so that when the governor says open, are we going to say, well, look, we've had our citizens tested and, you know, it's 10% of the population and we're watching and we're doing these procedures, but what are we going to do? How are we going to open? I don't, you know, what specifically?
Checking with the Department of Health, the current testing protocol is that anyone, even at the drive-through testing facilities, anyone seeking a test still requires a doctor's authorization to do so. So the reason why some of these, it's not just in Lee County, some of these facilities have closed down their remote testing facilities is because they basically haven't received any appointments to do tests.
Right, because. But Derek, could we set up a testing center that allows for people to call in to a doctor and say, I'm here, I'd like to get? And then right there, they fax in an approval and the person can get the test, you know, within the time that they're still there in line?
I, I don't think, I don't think that the city's in a position to set up the, get the necessary approvals to be a tester itself or to authorize that.
Well, but can we get Lee, Lee Health to do it?
Well, they already do it. I guess the question would, would be, we need to, we need to follow up with them to make sure that they have what they need to do it. But from Arlene's last comment, it doesn't sound like they're having issues with, with not being able to do enough tests.
Well, is it that people don't have primary doctors and don't have the ability to get an order? I mean, what, what, what's holding up the?
So, so Councilwoman, I do know from Lee Health that they have set up mobile, virtual doctor's appointments, and I believe they have waived the cost of those as well, so they can log on and have a virtual appointment with the physician, and then they can receive an order for the test as well. They don't have to do it in a doctor's office in person.
Right. Do we have a link on our website for that?
Laura, if you can confirm, I believe we have the links to all of the health's resources.
Yes, we do.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I was going to say, and Laura, please, our Councilwoman Carr, as you know, we do have this virtual town hall with Dr. Antonucci tomorrow. So any question, further questions or lingering questions, and you've raised some great points, please do submit those, and we can have those for discussion tomorrow.
Great. And Mayor, to remind everyone, is the virtual meeting, we are still collecting those questions till 5:00 PM today. We are currently are receiving questions as well for the, for the panel. And, and those will be available for the, for the panel to discuss.
Great. Thank you, Arlene. Do you have other items, Arlene?
I have, I have a couple of comments.
Okay, Amy, yes, please.
I thank you for that report. I just wondered others' reaction. I feel like we are getting an incredible amount of data that is being transmitted to us in emails that come twice a day, and that it takes some effort to go through that and click on the right link to get to where we're trying to do. And some of the summary that, Arlene, that you gave today, I think is very helpful, and it's the kind of things that our residents are asking us. I wonder if we could maybe at our workshop agree to a certain set of data that we would like to see highlighted in some kind of tabular form so that, I mean, I know maybe residents are, are willing to click through this stuff, but I find it incredibly tedious and confusing because I don't think we get the information. I can't find the information without going through a number of different things, Department of Health, you know, Florida State. So I think if we could agree, like, the testing information, you know, I think an important data point is the percentage that are testing positives because it does test the infection through the community. And, and the number, and I think the, the ZIP Code information is very important, which is not always there depending. We don't get that report on a regular basis. So if we could accumulate it ourselves in the city and just provide it to our citizens, I think would be very helpful. And I do hope that we have continuous conversation at the workshop where we can have a dialogue with the various council members about the things that we need to go forward to get to the point where we can reopen our city and bring it back to the way it was as best we can. I think we need the input from all our citizens, all our businesses, and all the councilmen at that point because I think we should go on record for the things that we would like to see, and testing certainly is one of them. You know, and rapid testing is one of them, but I, from my understanding from all the reports is that it's not really available right now to us. And one of the reasons, thank God, it's not available is because we have a low incidence, even though it's unbelievably painful. But I think that those resources are being directed to the areas of the highest need. So I'm grateful that, for that. So I think we have an opportunity to, to use our workshop in a fruitful way so that we can come up with a city policy or, or interest and, and get it to the people that really have to direct this, which is our county government and our state government and our federal government.
Thank you, Amy. Other members of council?
Yeah. We have a lot of people that are still working in Benita. And I think that we have a lot to learn from those people because I, from what I can see and hear, they're not coming down with a lot of Corona cases. Primarily, these are people in the service industry, plumbers, HVAC contractors, people that service generators, construction, lawn care. I think we need to be talking to those people and find out what they can tell us or share us with how they're handling it.
Thank you, Fred. Other members of council? Arlene, do you have other items to discuss?
I actually, I had one thing real quick, Mayor.
Yes, Jesse.
Arlene, when you were going over the numbers in 34134, you gave me 14. In 34135, we had 46 for a total of 60. So you're saying there's 60 cases in Benita?
That was the numbers from the Lee County Health this morning, but I believe that there was, I'd have to look. I thought the other by city, total of city was at 67. Was that correct?
I thought it was higher. Well, and it's also confusing because if you think about it, 34134, not to get super technical, there's Collier County addresses that are 34134. So if we're making our Benita analysis on 34134 and 34135, part of that is also Collier. So I don't know how the powers that be are dividing that appropriately, but just food for thought.
No, absolutely. And Astero is, has some overlap as well with our ZIP Code.
What we don't know is if the, when somebody is a patient and they report their address, you do have Benita Springs addresses that are actually different ZIP Codes as well. The city of Benita, their address, their mailing address or their resident could be Benita Springs. You also have in Astero, like the mayor said, you have residents in Astero that have the same ZIP Code as Benita. So this was the breakdown that I took just from the ZIP Code because I felt that was a little bit more, as the mayor says, drilled down a little bit further. But we have a different number on the actual dashboard for the city of Benita Springs, and I think that was 67.
Great. Thank you. Other members of council? More, more information, Arlene or, or Matt?
That's all I had to report today. We are, of course, preparing for your workshop next Wednesday at 4:00 PM. Laura has had outreach with Tiffany Esposito is confirmed as well as Terry Lemain is confirmed to attend, and I believe we have a representative from Love Inc. joining us as well. We're happy to receive your questions for those folks or comments beforehand. We'd be happy to put that in one document of the council and send that out unilaterally to all of council so you're prepared.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to mayor and council member reports. Amy Caramba, District 1.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to of course give my condolences to all the people not only within our city, but within our state and our country who are suffering from this virus and disease, both who have lost their lives or are just trying to get better, and we, I wish them well. I want to again thank all our residents, all our workers of all kinds who are trying to live their lives as safe as possible and being considerate of the larger community. This is a remarkable thing that we all are all doing. We're allowing ourselves to just stay home. And we should reinforce that and compliment people who give, stay the distance six feet apart and it's, we can't thank them enough and we should do it repeatedly. So that's what I'm doing. And I again want to focus on the workshop, which I'm looking forward to, and I will bring to the workshop suggestions that I've been thinking about and how we can move forward from here. And I think with partners such as the ones that Arlene has brought together, we can get more information and we can make a good decision as a team. Thank you about that. And we already addressed the letter to, that Carol Green mentioned, so we're all set. Thanks for everything and again, stay safe.
Thank you, Amy. Jesse Purdon, District 2.
Yeah, along the same lines of Amy that, you know, I responded to Carol too. I, I think that the timing of that is very important because we're going to have a very short window and a lot of that money is going to be vacuumed out into the ether and it's not going to come back. So hopefully we can get this agenda in front of him prior to everybody else. So I think she was very smart in doing it that way. And then as far as the folks who did public comment and you're watching now, I just want you to know that we spoke with Steph earlier, you'll all be getting a response. So we read them, we hear you, you will get a response. So don't think it just got sent into the email and then disappeared. That's all I've got.
Correct. Those, those that we can provide answers for or, or direct them to the appropriate entity that can provide that answer will do so.
Thank you very much, Arlene. Laura Carr, District 3.
No, I want to again commend our citizens for the really difficult job they're doing, but a really great job staying home. And the key though, folks, wash your hands. Keep washing your hands, soap and water. Wash your hands as often as you can. And I think we're kind of like in the eye of the hurricane. You know, and, and the eye of the hurricane, if you've ever gone out in it, it's pretty cool. And, but when it turns, it's scary and we're about turning. And next week, it's going to be, is the surge coming into Benita or going away? I don't think we have more than two weeks before Benita is going to have a surge and the recovery of our economy is going to be so difficult. You know, and it's sad, but people die every day and it's going to be far worse if we're shut down for even two weeks. But people have to start thinking, this is going to end. I mean, we're told, oh, stay home. The government says you can't go to work. Cool. Oh, the government's going to give us $1,000. Cool. What's going to happen next month? And the month after that? We, I mean, already businesses, small businesses are not going to reopen. So I just, my heart goes out to the business owners and, and especially, you know, the small business that just was on the cusp of sliding home. It's just heartbreaking. And I don't want to drag our feet. I know no one else does. So, you know, share with us, business, you know, leaders, if you have ideas. Clearly, we have plans that we would put in place if the governor allows us to open. And we could work with, I mean, Arthur X has a great program going, Walmart has a good program. We could do it. We just have to take, what does it take to open? And then fill in those slots as quickly as we can. So hopefully tomorrow, Mayor, you can get some of those answers from the folks and team up and, I don't know, go knock on the mayor's, the governor's door. But God bless Benita. God bless America. Stay strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you very much for that. Chris Corey, District 4.
Yeah, I just want to note that the, the Benita Springs community is a caring community. As a result of the workshop last week, I contacted the Lee County Health or Lee County, Lee Health and asked for information on their blood mobile. Our community association blasted out an email yesterday about four o'clock soliciting donors. Lee Health needs about 800 units of blood. By seven o'clock, we had over 30 responses. And we're starting to get worried that we may have too many potential donors for the blood mobile that we've got arranged on April 29th. So I just want to encourage people in other neighborhoods, other communities to think about the needs of our citizens in, in this area and, and especially their blood needs. And see if you can organize a similar blood mobile in your area. Because I think people are willing to reach out and help other people in this type of crisis. So that's the only thing I have to report.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Mike Gibson, District 5.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm doing good. Still working. Been very busy. A lot of people riding bikes right now. I've just noticed when I'm, when I am out driving, there are a lot more cars on the road. So I think people are starting to get more antsy. So hopefully the, the numbers are looking good and, and we can start getting back to business as usual or as usual as, as possible. I don't think anything's going to be usual anymore. I think there's going to be a lot of preventative measures. Just, I picked up Chinese food last night and my local Chinese place, you know, just reopened. They, they put up a whole plexiglass barrier across the whole thing, curtains separating the kitchen area from the pickup area. And, you know, so a lot of restaurants, a lot of places are doing everything they can to, to help stop the spread and to, to stay in business. So I think that's what we're going to see is the, the big thing opening up, we need to talk to the businesses. I think Laura brought up Walmart. You know, they've been instituting a lot of changes. Pretty, pretty much all, all the big retailers and even, even the small retailers that are still open. They're doing everything they can to protect their customers and their employees to help stop the spread. And the, the whole thing is we, we just need to get the, the economy going again. You know, we are very seasonal. We got maybe what, two, two-thirds of season this year. So hopefully, you know, the businesses made enough money to make it through the slower summer. But, but I think we just need to support locals as much as we can and, and just the, the big thing is, you know, we need to get back to opening things and, and just do it as safely as possible. And, you know, so that way everybody can make, make some money and keep the economy going and, you know, you know, like the hashtag that was used on a campaign, Benita Strong. So thanks and everybody hang in there. Good job, Steph.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much. Fred Forbes, District 6.
I agree with what Laura said about small businessman. I think we really have to do everything we can to, to facilitate getting the county to allow some of these businesses to reopen, maybe on a stage basis would probably be good. But I think, as I say, we've got a lot of people working right this minute, not only in Benita, but in Lee County. And I don't believe, and I believe they're working safely because I don't, I see the number of new cases is declining. It's not on the increase. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Fred. And I want to thank everybody and certainly would encourage everybody on city council, although I guess you won't be able to speak. I apologize about that if you do join us tomorrow for Florida sunshine law reasons, but please do get your questions in. I'd love it if you'd listened in and we want to thank Dr. Antonucci from Lee Health, the president, State Senator Kathleen Pasadomo, County Commissioner Ray Sandelli, and Fire Chief Greg DeWitt from Benita Springs and joining, and certainly look forward to getting out a lot of information and answering the questions from our citizens, from, from our council, quite frankly. And I just did want to report that Dr. Burks, I was on a call with her and other mayors around the country late last week. There was, there is a lot of information there that I will be sharing on tomorrow's call. And I, my heart goes out to everybody. This is devastating emotionally, physically, financially for a lot of folks, but I have no doubt, no doubt, we're going to come back and be stronger than ever. Stay positive and the really, everybody, everybody keeps saying it, but stay safe. And because of our efforts and because of what we've done, you're now seeing the numbers on the decline. But it's no time to let off. We can't, we can't just assume everything's okay yet. We've got to continue to be vigilant, continue to be safe. And with this and with our strong city council and strong staff at City Hall, we will get through this and there will be a lot of difficult times, but there's going to be a lot of great times. There's a lot of great things going on in this city. And very, very soon or soon as possible, looking forward to getting back to business as normal in Benita Springs. So with that, those are my thoughts and I hope everybody can join us tomorrow for the Benita Springs Virtual COVID-19 TeleTown Hall at 3:00 Thursday, April 16th. And with that, there is no public comment or we'll have those in the record and get those responses back to folks. Would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Further discussion, council? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Thank you, everybody. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. We are adjourned. God bless everybody. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, council.